I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Portsmouth School Committee for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And a moment of silence for our medical professionals as well as our troops in harm's way. Thank you. I.
Allegiance.
The flag of United States.
America.
And.
Public.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Your God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice.
This problem.
Thank you. If you hadn't noticed, the flag was in the upper left-hand corner, so.
No, have faith.
All right, um, well, we're going to try and keep this meeting relatively short, but first on the agenda is roll call. Uh, please let the record reflect that Mr. Shears is absent, absent tonight, otherwise all school committee members are present and accounted for. Um, this is an online, uh, meeting update. Uh, this is our first, uh, virtual school committee, uh, meeting. Uh, usually it's not allowed, uh, to have online meetings. But the governor, um, said we could and that we should since we can have no more than 10 people in a place at one time. So, uh, we are meeting through Zoom, which is available to the public. The meeting's being recorded and the meeting will be posted on the website. Um, so we're, uh, hoping to enable as broad a public participation as normal at our meeting. And maintain, uh, transparency as well. Uh, in order to minimize background from, uh, you know, dogs barking and everything else. Uh, we've asked, uh, Mr. Costa to mute the members of the public and when we get to the business items. If somebody has a question, you can raise your hand. Uh, there's a little raised hand icon down here. And, um, then he can unmute you, uh, for discussion, right? Um, so that's it for the online meeting update. Um, we don't have a subcommittee, uh, meeting update. But we do have, um, the rule now that says you can't have, um, meetings of more than 10. So in order to try and, um, accommodate the, um, social distancing rules. If we have to have a subcommittee meeting, we'll be trying to do them virtually as well. So, um. The only other thing on my, uh, chairperson's remarks, uh, is before all of this hit the coronavirus, I had the pleasure of judging some of the early senior product projects. I think Mr. Mr. Radney, didn't you do that too? Yes.
Hello, saying the superintendent.
And Mr. Kent, Dr. Kenworthy, you were there too. And I have to tell you, they were very impressive, you know, um, uh, it really is, uh, fun to look at these early senior projects because they're on the ball, they know what they wanted to do, and they, they really do, uh, a great job. And, uh, um, uh, it's nice to have sort of a, a sense of what they're, they're doing with these projects. Um, and I would be remiss before turning it over to Superintendent Kenworthy if I didn't, um, say a really heartfelt thank you from all school committee members to the super hard work that the district's been doing. I mean, from the administration level, principals, teachers, staff, I know they've been working on overdrive. Um, the last week to get it ready for distance learning, remote learning and all its various shapes and forms. And, and we really say thank you, you know, I think Portsmouth, uh, really says thank you as well. So, uh, Dr. Kenworthy, let me turn it to turn it over to you for the superintendent's update.
Thank you. Uh, so the only thing on my update tonight was just going to provide, uh, committee and, and the public here with, uh, the most up-to-date information that I have around our current, um, situation regarding school closures and distance learning. So we are officially in day two of distance learning here in Portsmouth, as I believe everyone is aware. Um, and really, uh, while the last, you know, month, uh, has definitely focused, uh, our attention in, in the country and in, in our state on, uh, coronavirus issues. Um, really, uh, Friday, March 13th, as of about 1:00 PM, that's when we received the official notice, um, for the governor that schools, uh, were going to be closed. Um, yeah, that, that was when everything really kind of ramped up for us and got set into motion. So, uh, up until that time, we weren't quite sure. We, you know, we kept kicking at many steps that we could. But as of that announcement on Friday, March 13th, what we knew for, for sure going forward was that the following week, uh, where we moved up April break in Rhode Island and that week was given to all districts for a planning week to get ready for, uh, the possibility at that time of additional closures and distance learning. So, uh, you know, I have to just commend our, our entire school department, as Dr. Copeland said, um, really, um, you know, and I, you know, one of the things with even going through and trying to, to single out, uh, just a, a few people is I would hate to leave anybody out. But, you know, this was really a collective effort from top to bottom. It, it all started, um, you know, throughout all of last week. Uh, this incredible planning, um, Kathy Sappala, who's filling in as our interim assistant superintendent and Dr. Lisa Mopel, our director of people personnel, really led the efforts, uh, for us around working, coordinating with our principals and building administrators. Um, who were then the, the key points of contact in their buildings on trying to develop our distance learning plans. Uh, Christi Orum, um, and, you know, stay focused on kind of the operations and for us. And, and there were a lot of things that we had to make sure, uh, we had set in, in motion for this week. You know, for, for last week and then these coming weeks as well. I cannot thank enough, like, again, our, our tech department has, uh, you know, led by Mr. Costa here. It really been, been working around the clock for us, making sure, uh, while we were in pretty good shape. Um, and that we were fully one-to-one in grades five through 10. Um, you know, and you've probably heard me say before, even in those grades where we're not fully one-to-one, where the students have taken those devices home. We were what, we were of a one-to-one ratio within our building. So what that meant for us was last week, and it even continued into this week. We've taken efforts to make sure, reached out to all family. They need a device to help them through these weeks of distance learning. Then we have provided a device for them, but, but obviously it took a lot of coordination and effort. And, um, you know, I think we've, we've handed out, uh, probably hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah.
Of devices at this point, but we're, we're prepared to continue to do that. We have, um, help that we can give assistance, you know, directions we can point people in for internet access. So it's just about, you know, really, you know, if there are still families struggling with either of those issues in our community, so getting the word out to them. Uh, and then of course, last week, an incredible burden fell on, on our teaching and support staff. So we were saying that, that we were moving up April break week and while our students, um, you know, got to enjoy some of that benefit, so to speak, in not having school, that was certainly not the case, uh, when, you know, came to our teachers and support staff. So we needed, uh, people to really pitch in as much as possible and help us, um, with these efforts and, and they really did that. Um, so I can't thank them all enough. And then really the, the last group that I would just, uh, point out here that I've been trying to do so in many of my communications. You know, I think we, we cannot lose sight of the efforts, uh, you know, from day one of, of this situation to, to even now finally of our custodial and maintenance staff who, you know, they're, you know, we're asking them to, uh, you know, uh, go even, uh, more above and beyond than they usually do and helping to clean and sanitize our buildings, uh, in, in later some cases, not knowing, you know, exactly, uh, what they're dealing with and they're just continuing to do that. We still, we're down to minimal operations in each of our buildings. Hey, but we still do have some, uh, you know, people coming in and out for things like devices, uh, and, uh, the, you know, the meals at Port of Middle School that I'll be sure to mention. So, uh, just a huge thank you again to that custodial and maintenance staff. Uh, so as we, as, you know, what we know for sure, where we are with the situation is that we're in distance learning for the next two weeks at a minimum. So that's going to take us through April 3rd. What we have been told right now is that we will have, uh, a, a decision sometime next week. We're hoping at least by the beginning or middle of next week on what the sa- situation will be after April 3rd. But we should definitely be planning for distance learning and all of our operations, supporting it to continue, uh, in that area. So, um, with that, all remaining state assessments that were scheduled, like RideCast, PSAT, SAT, uh, those have been postponed as of now. And I, I think that we'll just continue to see, uh, with any announcement beyond April 3rd and, and same for, you know, spring sports and whatever we'd be getting ready for, uh, at this point in the spring. And one of the, uh, we had a, a, a conference call with our, uh, principals, building administrators today. And, you know, one of the, the, uh, things with this, um, is that ironically, our student attendance rate has never been better because attendance off of the, the teacher interaction. So I, I can report that so far, uh, two days of distance learning. Our attendance rate is, uh, for students is up over 95%. Um, so there are, you know, we're down to a handful of families that we're just still trying to make sure we can make contact with. If, if, if teachers haven't been able to, uh, attest to that contact taking place. Uh, so just some other things with that, as we've been, uh, all the efforts it took to get our distance learning plan up and running and, and, and everything else. Um, then we are down to kind of minimal staffing levels, you will, in all of our buildings. So we have set up the opportunity for all of our kind of 12-month employees. So, you know, building clerical, building administrators, to be able to work remotely as much as possible. With that, making sure on a rotating basis, we're still at present time, continuing to staff each of our buildings for any, um, you know, phone call or contact that, that, um, families do need to make. Uh, I've also taken the, the step, uh, when we get into budget discussions, just so you know, um, I have, uh, you know, we, we call it, when we freeze our budget, it's, uh, you're not a- as, as drastic as, but usually when we get into, you know, about April by, you know, uh, by the end of April, um, you know, most districts kind of take that step anyway. As in motion, because we have to start closing our books out for the current, uh, school year and fiscal year. Um, so I just kind of, uh, accelerated that a little bit. We've, we've frozen our budget, so to speak, whereas we just, we kind of scoop up all of the, the lines. It doesn't mean that people can't continue to spend, um, uh, you know, in, in what had been their lines. If there are essential purchases that need to take place, but everything just goes through an extra kind of process where it gets scrutinized. And, uh, we took that step so that we can make sure any additional expenses related to, you know, the, the closure and distance learning, that we can make sure we have, uh, those, those monies freed up. On, on the other hand, with that, uh, obviously there are going to be some cost saving, right? It, while schools stay closed, so, um, you know, things, uh, just a couple of quick examples around things like professional development, uh, activity that may have been taking place or, uh, costs associated right now with, uh, spring athletics. When it would come to officiating, uh, games or travel for games, obviously those things are also, uh, those expenses are not accumulating. So, so right now, and I know it would probably be a question of, um, you know, but, and so, meaning with our, our current budget for this school year are related to the current closures and where we stand. Um, so a couple of other things as I, as I wrap up, um, this update, just a, a reminder, um, we do have, our, our grab and go breakfast and lunch program, um, was set up, uh, we're running out of Portsmouth Middle School from 9:00 to 10:30 AM. That is available to any, any student in the district, even under the questions asked. Um, you know, artists of free and reduced lunch status. This is a, a, a program that runs in some communities. If they have a high enough free and reduced lunch rate, it runs to the communities in the summer or on school vacations. So the program's a little newer to us, but one of the things, uh, Ride, the Department of Ed, work with all districts to make sure all districts could have at least one location, um, during our, our current shutdown, uh, that would do this. So, um, I can report after two days, um, handed out 64 meals yesterday and 73 today. So that, those are, um, you know, pretty good numbers for us initially in, in a program that didn't, uh, exist, um, like this in our district. So we, you know, we would love to see those numbers actually increase and Chartwell's, uh, provider has, has done a great job getting that program up and running for us. And so just to summarize, um, you know, all efforts have been, uh, kind of redirected towards supporting distance learning for students. Uh, we will continue to work through things as they come up, uh, for students and families. We have, uh, very limited access right now to all of our buildings. Where there is access, we're making sure that we, we, uh, practice good social distancing and, uh, not letting groups of 10 or more congregate. Uh, and then I would also just, um, you know, I will continue to bring attention in, in my communications to, throughout our school department, to, uh, the Town Emergency Operations Center. So that is, you know, there is in town hall on the second floor. What happened, the conference room is now a fully functional emergency operation center, operating seven days a week. And really, uh, you know, covering any, any, any potential issue that may come up around this current crisis. So, um, you know, it would just be a good resource for members of, of our school district community to know, uh, is in place. And, um, there's a link from the town website where, where you can get there. And I, I, uh, okay, I'm, I'm, I am a member of that, of that kind of leadership team around the, uh, town emergency planning that comes together. So we have, uh, calls that we, you know, started having regularly, uh, throughout this as well, so that I can stay abreast and keep them abreast of anything on, on our side. So that was, uh, that was it for me for the COVID-19 and school closure update.
Thank you. That was, that was nicely detailed and sounds like we have to wait till next week to hear what, uh, what the next steps are. I did have one question that was asked of me earlier. Um, if families are going to pick up these meals at the Grab and Go, do they have to bring the kids with them?
Yes, that's one of the requirements for this program. It actually, a, a, a student could show up without an adult. But if an adult shows up, they're supposed to have the student with them. In this particular program, it does follow all the guidelines, um, of the, of the, um, you know, national school breakfast and lunch programs. So we just have to make sure that we kind of stay, there's, you know, there's recording that Chartwell has to do around that. We just want to make sure that we say so. Technically, these meals go to the students, so the student is supposed to be present.
Okay, because that, that question came up earlier, but, um, I'm glad, you know, that, that's getting, that information's getting out there. Any, uh, questions from committee members? You'll notice you have a little raised hand, uh, icon down here if, if you have questions or, um, thank you. I know you, I know you and the staff have been working hours and hours and hours. So, um, it's obviously remote learning's no substitute for being in the classroom as, as we have two parents on the committee who I'm sure, uh, they're, uh, they're, they're now really, uh, uh, ruining the day that the schools have closed. But, um, but it, you know, I, I really appreciate all the efforts and, and that we're, we're going to make the best of things as we can going through. And I know Ms. McDade's actually doing teaching herself remotely and I've spent six hours on the computer today teaching university students. So it's a lot. It really is. Um, all right. Uh, can I have a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we have to, aye, and we got to raise hands up, okay? Uh, unanimous, uh, six-zero. Um, onto the business agenda. May I have a motion for discussion and approval of the FY21 operating budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Duro.
Okay, um, so this is our proposed budget, uh, for approval tonight. If you turn to page two, uh, you'll see just a summary. Um, our goal has been to get the town appropriation down to 3.5%, which you'll see we're at. Uh, in order to do that, I'll walk through, uh, the adjustments in a moment. But, uh, total expenditures are growing 2.7% again, town appropriation 3.5, because we're losing state aid. So 2.7% increase in total expenditures. Want to flip to page four. Uh, again, uh, similar to last couple of times, I will not go through all of the detailed budget, but certainly if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them. But I'll just walk through the changes. Since the last time, uh, we met, uh, there were 13 changes. Um, you'll see the first three are related to, um, salaries. Uh, we were able to, uh, add a 1.0 CTE teacher, uh, a 0.5 special ed teacher. And we offset those increases by, uh, adjusting our salary raises for next year down from our current, uh, previous assumptions. Those kind of offset and just netted to a small reduction. We also had, uh, a, um, we added three, uh, part-time general school aides, which is one of our, uh, goals. Uh, and we eliminated a 0.5 RBT, uh, that we were able to absorb with our existing, uh, staff. That was about a $10,000, uh, addition to the budget. Were able to take, uh, the current full-time payroll clerk, uh, to part-time in next year's budget based on, uh, the implementation of the, uh, new payroll software that we have and the current incumbent in that position is retiring. That was about a $27,000 savings. Uh, the next, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items, uh, were, uh, all the benefiting impacts from all those changes. So I won't go through them all, but as you know, staffing changes, so do benefits. Uh, then we had, uh, the PMS Prevention Counselor was added back to the budget for two days a week. Uh, and that, uh, is a net of a $5,000 donation, uh, pledged by the, uh, Portsmouth Prevention Coalition. Uh, and then the last item was on tuitions. Uh, we made a reduction of one tuition, uh, for a student that we brought back to the district. Obviously, tuition's is a very fluid number. Uh, students move in, move out all the time. Uh, but we took the opportunity, uh, to make that adjustment. So net-net, the budget was reduced by $340,000, which got us to the 2.7% increase and a 3.5% um, town appropriation increase.
Great. I'm sure the town council will breathe a sigh of relief and thank you to the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition as well. So any questions on those changes? I know we've seen the budget and heard quite a bit about it, but, all right, hearing.
I move, I move for approval of the, uh, fiscal year 21 operating budget as presented.
Okay, second. Good, second by Mr. Payaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, six-zero. Thank you, Mr. Duro and Dr. Kenworthy and everybody else for all the hard work on that. I know it's a major undertaking. Um, uh, item B, please, can I have a motion for discussion?
I move for discussion and action on the corona coronavirus emergency staffing plan, uh, memorandum of agreement with Council 94 regarding the April vacation week.
Second.
Second. Uh, Dr. Kenworthy.
All right, so these next two items, actually B and C, uh, would relate to, uh, where, where things stand, uh, with some of our current staff members. So, um, you know, we, we have kind of three groups of employees, uh, in the district, if you will. So those who work under the NEA Portsmouth contract, which mostly includes teachers, but also, you know, people like guidance counselors, school nurses, uh, et cetera, fall under there. Uh, and, and many, most of our support staff work, work under the Council 94 contract. Um, and then we have some other part-time employees and that's going to be what will come up in the agenda item C. But this agenda item B deals specifically with, um, uh, Council 94 members who would not typically get paid for, uh, April break because school would not have been in session. So, um, Mrs. Carroll had worked on this, uh, memorandum of agreement with Council 94 at the state level. And I know it has been enacted in, uh, some other districts and, uh, as well, or, you know, in, in plans to do so. Um, so it's just, it's just going to basically swap out this past week where April break was moved up. And is that, you know, at some point, hopefully we, we come back to school and there'll be a week that we have to kind of true things up, if you will. And, 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 um, you know, that, that they would not get paid. And the main thing here is that this was an unanticipated week off that people may not have been expected, uh, last week. We, Marion is unmuted. She is, okay, all right. So Marion, I believe you're unmuted if you wanted to add anything.
Yes, this is something that we're doing in different districts so that we can pay the employees who would not have gotten paid during April school vacation week. And, um, this has been sent to the union and I believe, um, Dr. Kenworthy has a signed copy today from the president of the union who was also on, um, this video. I saw her. Um, she has signed it. Um, Sylvia Napolitano, the Council 94 rep, has approved it. And we recommend that you also approve it.
Any questions? All right.
So, so I move for approval, but I'm wondering, are we approving both B and C, given that the superintendent?
Just B.
Okay, so, all right, so I move for approval of, um, the staffing plan, uh, with the memorandum of agreement for Council 94 in the April vacation week.
Okay, I think we already had a motion in the second floor. So, but just in case Carlos, do you want to second?
Second, I'll second just in case.
Okay, just in case. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous, six-zero. Um, thank you.
Just clar- clarification. We, on these items, we have a motion, when we have a motion to discuss an action, we haven't tech- the motion, the motion that I just called for was the action. So we, we, the mo- the first motion is for discussion. The second motion that I represent is the action we're taking, because we could just as easily, I mean, not in this case, but we could have rejected it. So that's why I, I made that second motion.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so for item C, I don't believe we need to approve anything, uh, but this is just a motion for discussion, I think.
Yeah, um, so.
I, wait a minute, we gotta have a motion.
Motion for discussion and action on the coronavirus emergency staffing plan for continued closure.
Okay.
Beyond April 3rd.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Payaro, okay? Dr. Kenworthy?
So yeah, so I explained, right, we have, we've got NEA Portsmouth and certainly, uh, everybody, uh, within that bargaining unit, um, really continuing to work throughout school closure. Uh, you just approved item B, which will take care of Council 94. So then that next group of employees that we would have, um, who kind of fall into the part-time category for us, bus monitors, general school aides, part-time clerical. I did put in your back of just a memo that, uh, we wrote and got out to those individuals, only because there was so much uncertainty going around. And some of those people were wondering if they needed to file for unemployment right away. So this will, this memo will get us through April 3rd, that what we know for sure, the next two weeks of the closure. We would need to make some decisions as to what we do with this group of employees if the closure extends beyond April 3rd. This is another group, you know, that they're, they're part-time employees, but they, they typically only get paid for the school days that they work. Um, what I can tell you, you know, and I'll just kind of leave this to, to your discussion, uh, is that I, I continue. We, we have regular conference calls of all superintendents, uh, where we get together to keep our own group. So even as of today, I, um, specifically this question and no district, I've, I've been told, no district has taken, made a decision yet on what to do with these type of employees beyond April 3rd. So just so you have that other piece of information, I think, I think everyone is just waiting to see what, you know, what the, the further announcement is next week.
So let me just ask a point for clarification here. This is, there is nothing that we need to approve here. You've taken care of the action with the, the memo for right now. This is just for our information and you would like feedback on where we go from here?
Correct.
Okay, um, Attorney Carroll, I think you had a comment on this?
Yes, so what this memo has done, as the superintendent has in his staff, have, um, given you a memo where everybody, um, every employee in the, in the district is being paid through April 3rd. And that's what most districts at this point are doing. They're paying, they're paying all of their staff members through April 3rd. Um, what I'm going to recommend is that at, when we talk about upcoming meetings tonight, that we schedule a school committee meeting, um, prior to April 3rd, possibly next Thursday, April 2nd. By then we'll know what the governor is doing in terms of closing schools, continuing with the virtual learning. At this point, she's, he continues to say that she does not think they'll open. However, she's not going to make that decision until later next week. I believe we're going to need a meeting, um, prior to April 3rd, so that the school committee can at that time determine what we're going to do about paying the entire, um, Portsmouth staff going forward. So this covers us through April 3rd. Between now and April 3rd, the committee is going to have to take further action to just decide what's going to happen going forward after April 3rd.
Okay, I think that's a solid recommendation because we really don't know yet until we hear from Governor Raimondo. Um, other committee members or is everybody amenable to having a meeting on April 2nd?
Yes, for Fred.
Yeah.
Yes. I have no idea.
Yeah.
Hey, we're all going to be at home, right?
Yeah, I kind of feel like we're the Brady Bunch here, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's okay, do a little intro. We'll do one with one of the, uh, youth.
Okay, um, well, um, you know, and by that time point, Tom, I think the superintendents probably will have had a more, a bigger, uh, a chance to discuss this as well and we can see what other. other districts are doing too, right?
Yep, I will stay up to date with that information. Like I said, as I asked specifically as of today, district that I'm aware of has made a decision. Everyone is just waiting until that further announcement from the governor next week.
Okay, so if we could, you know, just make sure that Amanda will tentatively post or post a meeting for a full school committee meeting on April second at seven PM, work for everybody?
That'll be, as far as you know, that'll be the only item on that agenda.
Right. I mean, at that point, we might make a call if we need to move the seventh meeting up and then not have the seventh meeting, for example.
That would be okay, too.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Item D, please, a motion.
Okay, a move for discussion and action regarding the coronavirus emergency. This is regarding providing the superintendent with additional authority throughout the current state of emergency in Rhode Island and the town of Portsmouth, and I'll read it, it's not, it's not long. So for the duration of the state of emergency enacted by the state of Rhode Island and Portsmouth Town Council, I move that the Portsmouth School Committee grants the superintendent with the authority to make all necessary decisions that he believes are in the best interest of health and safety of Portsmouth students and staff, and to maintain the workings of the school department during this emergency. This emergency power shall include, but is not limited to, these following bullets, this, manage the budget transfers and expenditures, power to negotiate contracts for school operations, power to release checks, power to award contracts and bids, negotiate a potential one-year extension to the bus contract without going out to bid, and lay off employees if necessary based on legal contractual parameters. It's understood that this authority is in the absence of a timely school, the school committee meeting, and can be withdrawn at any time, and superintendent shall consult with the chair and vice chair on these decisions.
I have a second for discussion.
Second.
Okay, Attorney Carroll.
Okay, so that, this is, and again, if we're able to do these meetings, and it looks like this is working out very well tonight, this emergency power going forward may not be necessary. But in the event that something happens within the next couple of days, and the superintendent needs to make some decisions, this has been done in consultation with the superintendent and Mr. Diaro. These are some of the things that, that he may have to decide on. So again, it's emergency power in the event that he can't get a meeting together, and we are recommending that our school departments around the state give the superintendent some emergency power as, as town councils are giving their town managers in the event that something comes up. So it's our recommendation that you pass it.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I have my low heat.
Okay, Mr. Vady.
Okay. All right, right now, I don't really see it's necessary. Now, this is twenty twenty-one, we're video conferencing. Now, going through the point that I got to the email, arranging timely meetings, if this was the coronavirus right, right now, you would have to have a meeting. And since everyone is at home, it's actually easier under these emergency circumstances to schedule a meeting than it would be. Now, to the second issue of the, over that today, and, and in the past, before coronavirus, let's say they need to make some adjustment, maybe with a town manager, whatever, in the budget, they would have to set up a meeting, you would have to approve the modified budget or expenditures that go over ten thousand dollars, whatever the rules we have in policy. So again, I'm seeing any difference, we would have to have that meeting, whether it's virtual or real. Then for paying our employees, but we're dealing with that on the second, and providing superintendent with this authority, again, as I just said, not necessary. And then we have another issue, which is an executive there within the, and we can have executives, you know, meetings. In other words, right now, with the virtue of virtual meetings, I'm not really seeing any need to give these powers, or, you know, it is in a time of an emergency, but, you know, it's actually easier in a sense to do it now, because we're a captive audience. And, you know, I just don't see the organization, so I'll be voting no on it. Plus, it's just, point, you know, it's, you know, I don't like the idea, to me, we are in an emergency compromising democratic principles. This is our authority, our responsibility, and I, you know, we were elected as leaders, or either school committees, other town councils are doing it, but I think, you know, we'd lead and not follow.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
I'd be curious, I'd ask Attorney Carroll why she, I mean, given what Tom just said, and the fact that we're all in a stay-at-home mode right now, which does make our meetings easier to arrange, is it, is, in her opinion, is it really necessary for these?
So even though we can arrange meetings, we, unless it's, if it's an emergency, you know, we can get everybody together if it's a true emergency. I, we just felt, and again, other, other districts have accepted this as an emergency, if something were to come up tomorrow, after consulting with the chair and the vice chair, you would like the superintendent to be able to take that action. Again, you're going to meet next week. If for some reason you want to take away this power, you can. It clearly says you can withdraw it at any time, and, you know, if we have to call an emergency meeting to take away the power, we can. But there may be some decisions that the superintendent will need, need to make for the health and safety of Portsmouth students and staff, and we'd like to be able to give him that leeway. But again, it's your call.
Anybody?
Well, just point out, again, what happened, this was not the coronavirus. Let's say this happened three months from now, six months from now, there's an emergency on Monday. How would you have handled it without the coronavirus? I don't see where the coronavirus changes the circumstances, you know, except that we're doing this, you know, or, you know, video, because it's, you know, just under normal circumstances, an emergency happening, school committee authority, authority is going to have to call an emergency meeting anyway, if, if the coronavirus wasn't here. So I just don't see how, you know, this, you know, really benefits the situation in these circumstances.
Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to ask a clarifying question. So in this circumstance, assuming that we can continue to meet virtually, it's my assumption that, that all approval processes, all the things that are covered in this, this memo would continue the way that we traditionally do them, unless there's an emergency or something changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what we're really doing is safeguarding in the event of something extraordinary. We're in extraordinary time, so I, I do think, I understand Mr. Vady's point, and I appreciate that point, but it does seem as though, given the circumstances, that the, the possibility of there being an emergency that needs an immediate response is higher than it would be under ordinary circumstances, at least in my opinion.
Okay. I guess, I think Mr. Vady's point's well taken, in that, given their ability to, to meet, we, we probably won't need this, as Ms. McDade was talking about, but I could envision that, you know, if they're talking about seventy or eighty percent of the population getting coronavirus, what happens if we can't make a quorum, for example, right? And there needs to be budget transfers. I mean, I, I guess I trust the superintendent's judgment that, that he would consult with the chair and the, the vice chair, and that this probably, knock wood, you know, wouldn't be used, but it seems to me that it's kind of like that emergency power of attorney. If you don't have it, you kind of wish you did, but hopefully you never have to use it.
And, and I just want to add that the last sentence, I hope Mr. Vady answers your question, it says that it's understood that this authority is in the absence of a timely school committee meeting. So if we're planning a school committee meeting next Thursday night, obviously, unless something happens between now and Thursday, nothing is going to be done by the superintendent that he needs your authority for between now and Thursday. But God forbid, you know, we all get the coronavirus, and we can't get together for a meeting, somebody needs to keep the school department running.
And I might add that if something, if some sort of emergency relevant to this occurred before the forty-eight hour period that we need to, I think we still need forty-eight hours to post, to post an agenda, it might, it might be something that has to be done before we're able to get it on an agenda in time, in a timely fashion for the next meeting.
Well, addressing the issue of the agenda, if you have an emergency meeting, the time restrictions on the posting go away, correct?
You're correct. If we had an emergency, we could call an emergency, I mean, we could call a meeting tomorrow if we had an emergency tomorrow.
All right, now, one more, on the specific issue of the contract, we're currently under contract continuation, so the current contract is the contract. So I don't see why we need to grant authority to negotiate and, and approve the contract.
I don't believe this is for, I, I think this is for contracts that Mr. Diaro might need for an emergency if something came up. I don't believe we were talking about personnel contracts here. Chris, do you want to weigh in?
But.
In contracts, that's like electricity, utilities, anything that I normally would have to, you know, wait two, three weeks, if I needed to award something just to keep things going. And just keep in mind, too, it's not normal operation, so whatever I'm doing and my staff are doing, we're either doing from home, or like the half a day we come to the office, so we don't have a very big window, like on checks, for example. We're going to come in on one day, print the checks in the morning, and put them in the mail. We're not in five days able to wait and then release things. So that's kind of where we're going there. I don't think that was ever meant to be employee, you know, collective bargaining agreements. But I know it wasn't.
Mr. Vady, I'm wondering if, after that bullet of power to award contracts and bids, if we amended the motion to put in parentheses, accepting labor contracts, close parentheses, and maybe we put an expiration date on this power of August, you know, twenty twenty, so that it's, it's very clear that this is kind of a temporary situation, and then we can revisit it? Would that, would that ease some of your concerns?
Again, the details, again, not affecting the nefarious activity here. It's just the point that we're giving away authority, responsibility, oversight for, for practical purpose at the moment, I don't see we need. Now, things start getting serious, you know, a month from now, again, estimates, this could end in a month, it could end in four months, depends on what source you're looking, and, and it looks like we really do that, and see maybe improvement at time for unlimited activities, but, yes, it's the principle, you know, we are elected officials, and I just don't like the idea of giving you my power, responsibility, oversight, et cetera.
Well taken, nobody likes to give away power.
Yeah, well, but it's also responsibility. I mean, if, that's a good way to dodge a bullet, if something goes sideways, you say, hey, don't blame me, I have no power, blame the superintendent. But it's our, at the end of the day, responsibility is elected officials, and I think that though it's that responsibility is easy to give away, I don't think you should be giving that away. And with oversight.
Remember, this is in the absence of a timely school committee meeting, so I think it's implied that if this continues the way we're doing right now, this never would be invoked, but if six of us come down with coronavirus and we can't have a timely school committee meeting, then they might need it. So I, I think I would move to insert, or I would request a motion to insert an amendment that says after contracts and bids, accepting labor contracts, close parentheses, and then I think I, I would be, I personally would vote in favor of it as just kind of a, just in case.
I'll be voting now, since someone else will have to make the motion.
Okay.
Well, I made the motion for the original discussion, so I don't know if I can make the.
No, you can't make the amendment. Would somebody make that amendment, accepting labor contracts?
Sure, I move that we amend the fourth bullet to say, accepting labor contracts at the end.
Thank you. Second, can we vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, okay, four out of six, four aye, two nay. Any other comments on the, the motion, other concerns? Hearing no further discussion, or seeing no further discussion? Then, I move, I call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five? All opposed? One, okay, five one, passed. All right.
I move for discussion and action on the school buildings, maintenance policy, ECB, final read.
Second.
I think we've heard these already, were there any changes in this? I don't believe there were.
No changes, it's just, I know, read.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. Next.
I move for discussion and action on the school buildings, supervision of construction policy, FEH, final read.
Second.
No changes, correct?
No changes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, or, Mr. Vady, was your hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, unanimous. Next.
I move for discussion and action on the school buildings, energy conservation policy, ECF, final read.
Second, sorry.
Thank you. No changes?
No changes.
No changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, six-zero.
I move for discussion and action on the appeals to school committee policy, BGBA, final read.
Second.
Thank you. No changes?
No changes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, six-zero. All right, so.
Move for a German.
Oh, wait a minute, let's talk about the upcoming meeting really quick, I know you got that in there. I'm, I'm hearing consensus that we would like to add a meeting on April second, which will be a virtual meeting as well, and then if we need it, we will have a meeting on April seventh. So, and how long do you think it'll take to post this meeting on the website? Couple of days, Mr. Costa? I don't know.
I will give it to Amanda tonight, so.
Oh, okay, so that should be up there tonight. Now, may I have a motion for a German, please?
Can we ask one more thing? Wait.
Wait a minute, sure, one more.
While we're talking about posting meetings, we need to post a subcommittee, negotiating committee, Mrs. Cop, Dr. Copeland, we discussed that today.
Yeah, and though, we'll get Amanda to get the dates out for that.
Okay.
I assume that'll be virtual as well?
Yeah, of course, of course.
So we need it at least two days from today, because, I mean, two days from tomorrow morning, because she'll have to post it tomorrow morning.
She can send out the little calendar thing, Google calendar. Okay, now, may I have a motion for a German?
Motion for a German.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Unanimous, goodbye, everybody.
Good night.
Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.